Can I have a motion for an approval of the present agenda?
Motion.
Anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to appoint our new board member, R36. Be it resolved that the Board of Education appoint Ashley Zwindelberg as a member on the Chatham Central School District Board of Education, effective December 9th, 2025 through May 19th, 2026. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So, our district clerk is going to administer the oath for Ashley.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the State of New York.
Please, surprised to have multiple qualified candidates for this appointment this year. That's not always the case. Sometimes we have to really get out and mobilize to get people to volunteer. So, thank Ashley and everyone else who applied. And of course, you know, it's five months and then we're back into election again. But just that note.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Okay, guys, we're gonna cruise right through this meeting here. Let's go. All right, we're gonna go to building and department reports and our senior team is going to give us the capstone presentation. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I think everybody maybe knows me, but my name's Ashley Keegan and tonight I'm here on behalf of the senior team to, well, they're all here too, but to just give you a little bit of feedback on our interview event. So, I'd like to start with some thank yous. First and foremost, thank you to the senior team, which is a group of very dedicated people to the success of our students. We have a lot of pride but no egos and so it's a really special group. Just some more personal, Megan Conley is our student-facing team member, so she teaches all the students in English and really helps to translate our ideas and events into tangible learning experiences for all of our kids. And her grace and ability to act as a liaison between the team and the seniors is really important. She does that very well. Jen Diorio is our spreadsheet guru who has a never-ending quest for efficiency and moving the needle little by little towards excellence, which is really a vital part of success. Donna Eager is our perennial optimist who has brought me back to sanity many a time with a simple reminder that everything's gonna be okay and she just simply refuses to see all of the positive and that's really special. Sandy Fisher, I think might be online if she is, but she's with us every other day but really gives fully to our team and to the students. As you know, she has endless energy and patience and is kind of our network out in the community. I think she single-handedly filled like half of our spots, many with her family. And Rodney Stickles is just really dialed into our student community and he's always really helping to remind us of the kid behind the actions and that's really, really helpful. So, big shout out to the senior team, thank you. Secondly, obviously, the students, they worked really hard to prepare for the event and they, as always, showed up. They looked great. They, it was great to see them that day. Our community members who helped this year and continue to support our district in so many ways and the Chatham High School staff and administrators who kind of had no choice but to be mildly inconvenienced by us because we kind of took over the whole, the whole school. So, this was our fourth annual mock interview event. And for those that don't know, this event really started as a summer work session with the senior team and Megan kind of bravely suggested that we should switch it up and try to include community members and be a little bit more realistic and authentic. And over the past four years, we've really taken everybody's feedback, tried to continue to work to improve the event and ultimately, we really feel that it gives the kids a strong experience in the interview experience, like from start to the interview to finishing up with thank you cards. So, that, we feel really proud of. New this year, we surveyed the students first for their interest and then made pairings with that. So, it was a little bit less square peg round hole that we have done in years past and we really feel like this made a stronger match between the students' interests and possible career paths and the interviewer that they were paired with. Students were able to tailor their cover letters to the business or person that they were interviewing with and also update their resumes as well. And this year, they were actually able to email the people their resume and cover letter, which was really cool. That was based on some changes to our email policy and both students and interviewers highlighted the value of being able to do that. Overwhelmingly, students were happy with their pairings. One student said, "I think that me and my interviewer clicked on the first question. We were a good pairing and it made me feel comfortable conversing with him. I think I felt this way partly because we prepared and practiced in class for the interview, but I definitely also feel that way because of how much hospitality he showed." So, I think that really just shows what the students were feeling. A couple notes on who came to join us. We had 35 different interviewers, including 21 new, or excuse me, 21 returning participants and 14 new participants. We had three former students, one former teacher, three parents, one grandparent, a tattoo artist, a funeral director, a board member, a former board member, seven district employees, one fluent Spanish speaker, one pilot and one Google Meet with a dental hygienist among some others. The Google Meet was unique this year. It's not, we don't really go for that, but it just worked out. And some of the local businesses that came to help were OMI, The Crandall, Simmons Automotive, Blaisel Funeral Home, The Devil May Care Tattoo, Sheer Images, Chatham Small Animal Hospital, Velacia EMS, Deconic Engineering, Chatham Central School District, Rebecca Sullivan Homes, Columbia County Youth Theater and a bunch more businesses outside of our community. So, it was a really, really cool day. Some of the things that the students learned from the experience was to practice prior to the event and to be aware of their level of professional dress. Many reflected on their body language, eye contact and handshakes upon entering the room. One student said, "Being prepared wasn't about knowing my exact answers that I wrote down. It was about thinking on the spot, using stories that really portrayed me and knowing what I want out of the interview." So, that's really what we want the students to take away from this experience. We hope that they have a low-stakes opportunity to participate in something that we assume they're all gonna do one day, probably more than once. We really want them to understand and practice the preparation that it takes to succeed in an interview. One of the survey results that kind of surprised us was that many students reported the experience was less stressful than they anticipated and what we realized was that our emphasis on preparation, meaning like take this seriously, was misinterpreted as a warning that the interview would be successful and anxiety-producing. And this is kind of a concerning trend where our warnings about difficulty are translated into anxiety and I think it requires a little bit further exploration, not only by us but probably the rest of our teams here. Going forward, we wanna address that as we figure out our messaging for capstone so that it is not translated into anxiety and stress but simply preparation. And finally, we got a lot of positive feedback from the community members who came in to join us. There was unanimous consensus in the responses to our survey that the event was excellent, well-organized and that the students were prepared and many indicated it was a highlight of their year and would return in future years if necessary. So, I'm happy if you have any questions or want any more details or information, I'm happy to provide that.
Can I just say something?
Please.
I got to be part of it this year. This was my first year doing it and I was so pleasantly surprised at how not nervous my three people were and they were very prepared, they were not nervous, they answered all my questions and then they asked me questions, which I thought was very forward-thinking of them, thinking of them and I really hope that I get to come back again. It was awesome.
Good, so do they because one of our survey results was bring Dr. Lundey back, so.
It was all so great. I got to observe some of the capstone presentations from last year and I was just amazed at the level of excellence they showed and the fact that they were attaining skills that were going to go with them after they left Chatham. So, thank you all for doing that.
And I'm in the unique position of having two students that went through this process. I believe Michael was one like that first year.
Yeah.
And, and that's come in handy. He learned a lot from that. He's used a lot of those skills and my other son really appreciated getting that out of the way. Like having it the first one out of the way so that he knows the next time going in what to do, how to, you know, what to prepare for. So, it is from a student standpoint, it's a very positive experience. I mean, it's been amazing and I am so grateful that they had that opportunity here in Chatham to participate and you guys are great. We really appreciate you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna be a bummer here and ask the hard questions. So, I'm curious, do we have students that are still on makeup or has everyone gone through it at this point?
Everyone has gone through it. In fact, we had our last one today. One student was absent, they were sick and they did exactly what we asked them to do, which is to email and I believe the morning of and say, "I'm really sick, you know, what should I do?" And we were able to kind of move some things around. We said, "Stay home, don't worry about it, thanks for letting us know." Mr. Bordell was kind enough to come and help us with that interview, I believe, the next week or the week after. And then we had another interviewer who had to cancel and that took a little bit of rescheduling, but she was able to come in this morning and it was a, it was a great experience. They actually had a little bit of extended time, which was really nice for the student. So, aside from those two, everybody showed up.
All right, and then the follow-up to that is, everyone showed up that was going to show up. Do we have anyone that just really didn't make it to the end of this project? Were we now worried about English graduation?
Well, I would say it's, it's a little bit early probably. Our capstone presentation is the final exam for English. So, I think for us and the team, this is usually kind of a benchmark in terms of are we seeing students that are not showing up? Are they showing up the minute that their interview starts? There's a couple, I think there were some, some more perhaps dragging of feet based on nerves versus anything else. So, it really helps to give us an idea of how to intervene with different students moving towards the capstone. But I hesitate to say, yeah, everybody's gonna make it because everybody showed up. The capstone's a little bit of a different experience, but I think this one has its own set of nerves and the fact that everyone showed up and even our students who are very nervous for, in different settings, were really able to accomplish this to their best of their ability, which is great news moving forward to the capstone.
Well, that's, that's good because I know it's, this is the time of year when I start, we start to see those trajectories, maybe not, not reaching where they need to be.
Yes. Yeah, um, yeah, I won't say that we don't have those questions and those kind of things that we need to talk about, but the really great thing about the senior team is not only do we put on this program, which is the CB binder, the interview, the capstone presentation and the expo awards in the spring, but we're also able to take a lot of time to intervene for students who maybe a little bit of support or motivation or we've started last year meeting with guidance monthly. So, the guidance department will come and meet with us monthly so that we can really kind of try to cut that trajectory out the pass. And I think by and large, it's, it's helping, still, still. I'll be back, I'll be back in May then and then you can ask me the really hard question.
Well, I, I just, this is the time of year where we can do something about it. By May, it's really hard.
Yeah.
Hard.
Yeah.
Hard. Yeah.
It isn't just the senior team.
Yeah.
It's those seniors in all of their classes.
Right.
And we really aren't in a position to answer for all of their teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think the conversations that our team, you know, we represent a bunch of different content areas. Donna's been with these kids, you know, through middle school, so that's been really helpful. As I said, Rodney's really dialed in and the population that he works with. So, all of our points of view and backgrounds and experiences, as well as the meetings with guidance, have really been helpful in terms of parent communication, everybody speaking the same language, knowing what needs to be done.
Talking to colleagues throughout the region, they are always asking us, "Oh, I heard you have this capstone project. Tell me more about it." This is incredibly unique and really special and it's something we should be proud of and it's a big testament to our senior team and all of their organization on it. So, kudos to you. This, this type of work is what the state is looking at and looking at different ways to assess kids and we have a great model here in Chatham. So, thank you to all of you for your hard work and please know it doesn't go unnoticed and we know how, how special and important it is. So, on behalf of the kids, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just, before I leave, I normally say for the whole meetings, but my district that I live in, my school district, is holding a $61 million capital project budget tonight and I really am gonna go and vote on that. So, I'm gonna jet to make that on time. I just didn't want anyone to think I was presenting and leaving. I have a little experience. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Andrew, updates from our superintendent.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. So, as promised, now that the first quarter is complete, I would like to give a quick attendance update. So, there were 45 days of school in the first quarter and according to New York State, if a student was absent five or more days at this point, which would be 10%, the student is considered chronically absent. So, as a district and every building, we, we are really tracking these numbers closely and really providing as many interventions as possible when working with these kids, these, these children. This is something we talk about regularly and will continue to talk about. Now, the first quarter's tricky because five days, think about it, that could be one illness, right? So, if a child is more than 20 days at the end of the school year, then they're considered chronically absent by the state. So, yes, we're tracking the five, but we also have to be careful with that because like I said, that could be one illness. I know my, my daughter was out four days due to being really sick with a really bad cold. So, so yes, our numbers are accurate, I'm gonna go through those, but we have to use those with a grain of salt because they are, one thing that we're doing is we're taking a look at past years and doing a comparison of where these kids were out of past years and if this is a pattern. So, I'm gonna go through a couple of things. I'm gonna go through the print, the percentage attending by grade level. What we're looking at is anything under 94%, we're gonna be looking closer at that grade to see if there's any things we can do by the grade level and you'll, you'll kind of see what I mean. Let me start with those and then we'll go about the, how many, what the chronic absenteeism percentage is by school. So, looking at kindergarten, now this percentage is our, our students present. So, we, we look at every single day, all 45 days and this is the percentage of presence that we have. So, that way you can at least see what students and what grades that we're kind of targeting for intervention. So, pre-K is actually our lowest percentage of, of being present and that's at 90.57%. So, that's an area that we need to really focus on with the parents and really educate with the parents the importance of coming to school. Then we go up to kindergarten, we're at 92.7, first grade, 93.06, second grade, 92.92, third grade, 95.1, fourth grade, 93.47, in fifth grade, 94.14. So, in these numbers, as we're, as we dive into this deeper, it looks like our elementary students are actually absent more often than our intermediate students, which is a common thing that we're seeing and that is a big education piece. Also, younger kids get sicker often as well. That's another factor. There's so many factors to this and also in the elementary school, germs tend to spread a lot easier because they're all over each other, right? So, that is not, that's not abnormal to see, but it is the reality of it, but it's something that we're looking at. Going to sixth grade, our sixth grade percentage numbers are amazing. 96.2, grade seven, 95.2 and grade eight, 94.1. So, none of those are below that 93% that we're kind of targeting, which is really good for the middle school. So, we're seeing some good attendance rates there. Now, going to the high school, we have our ninth grade at a 95.1 percentage being present. Tenth grade, 92.8, so that's a little bit more of a target area we wanna look closer at. Eleventh grade, 94.07 and then 12th grade, 93.1%. So, those, in those grades, we're looking really at that 10th grade and 12th grade mark. And then for our chronic, again, we're only looking at five because we're, we're so at the beginning of the year, but we had 72 students had five or more absences in the elementary school out of 384. So, that's an 18.75 percentage chronic absenteeism. So, 18, almost 19% of our students had five or more absences at the elementary school. At the middle school, we had 26 students that were absent five or more days. That's out of 198, so that's a 13.1% chronic absenteeism rate. And then at the high school, we had 53 students out of, out of 300 current students and with five or more absences and that's an 18%. So, we're tracking these numbers closely, we're providing intervention, we're looking at individual kids, we're looking at illnesses, sending letters home, educating families. So, this is something where we're talking a lot about as an administrative team and with their teachers and we're intervening. And just another interesting fact, which I thought this was pretty amazing, I didn't get this for all the other schools, but at the high school, there were 81 students with perfect attendance for the first quarter. It's pretty cool, that's a good number, 81 kids had perfect attendance. So, we have some really good attendance too, which is nice to see. Any questions from the board on it? We'll continue to update you as we go throughout the semester and we'll talk about interventions we're doing as we go.
I'm curious, I know you're, you're always looking at the, what are the causes and what are the things, what are the things you can intervene on to improve? To what extent can we correlate those with specific identified students? Is that something that's even possible?
So, we look at patterns for students to see, you know, we look to see, we don't always know if they're sick, we have to go to the nurses sometime, like it's really individually-based, right? So, if we know a child was out because they were ill, we would go to the nurse and check and we would take that child off the list, right? We wouldn't send a note home for that. So, you really, you could dive deep into them and like I have a whole, I have the list of all the students that are chronically absent. So, in our data bank, it will say, like for example, the elementary school, I have all 72 kids' names, how many were, were considered excused or unexcused, right? So, we do have that data that we can get from our system that we do dive deep into.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the upside of having a small district is it's really possible to make these, to personalize these.
Yeah, yeah.
The principals like really know.
What, what I have found as a, you know, elementary educator in elementary schools, I was in a district that we had some really challenging with chronic absenteeism. It was really educating the families of the importance of sending them to school and talking about how it impacts them not being here. You know, so we, it's really just communicating, discussing, having those conversations. Then COVID happened, right? And then we told everyone to stay home if you have a little sniffle, right? So, we're still kind of coming back from that. So, it's such a balance because you want kids to stay home if they're sick, right? And, you know, I think it's that time of the year, that illness time of the year is happening. So, you gotta be really careful with it. So, it's really something you, and we try to really decipher which are illnesses and which are kids just staying home. So, the kids that we, we identify are ones that it's not because they're ill, it's because their parents just aren't putting them on the bus. Those are the ones we really have to intervene with.
I, I forget, are we one mile on transport or two?
One mile.
One mile. Do we identify cases where it's literally transportation?
So, that is something that, you know, we're gonna be talking about internally. There are some students, especially elementary students, that live in that mile range and are, have reported that they can't get their child to school because they don't have transportation or someone to walk them to school. So, in the cold weather especially.
Yeah.
That's something we could talk about. We have to have a board policy change on that to offer, you know, maybe, but that's something, but yeah, that, we, we've talked about that as being an issue for a handful of kids.
I'm, I'm curious how many.
Yeah, I can get that.
And then.
We've talked about, I, the, Kristin and I just were talking about that at the, that's more of an elementary school impact, especially the younger kids in pre-K and K that they, their parents don't want them walking a mile, obviously, but they can't get them to school. That has been a conversation with some families, yeah.
Yeah, and I could, I could sort of see that playing around, playing out in the high school as well where kids just don't feel like walking.
Farming for them in the morning and then they come for lunch. Last, I don't know exactly how many we have last, this year, but we had 90 senior citizens come last year. 120. Last year was the biggest ever, so it is spreading. That is amazing.
So, now I have to, now I have to ask, where from? Because, are we busing people in?
So, we, so we, we do provide, and I forget the name, what, what is the paint, paint home? We do provide a bus to paint home for those, the rest are driving in or coming with family. It's, it's all throughout our, our Chatham School District, yeah. It is, you know, being there last year and just hearing how excited those people were there and they were telling me stories about, you know, we were in the gymnasium, telling me stories about when I was in high school, I had, I remember that basket, you know, just, we, they were, it was so fun. And I think the news is spreading what a great event it is. Obviously, we have 25 more people from last year and last year we had 90 some. Gymnasium, yeah, and we, and we, we, they decorate it, it looks beautiful, they have beautiful tables out and it's all set up beautifully, the food is delicious, they have a turkey dinner. They do a gift giving where they're, where people are donating items from around home and everyone gets a gift when they come in and there's kids serving and it's a beautiful event. Beautiful event, yeah, it's one of my favorites. So, it's this Friday. I wanna congra, say congratulations to Paxton Brunel and Aiden McShane for their all-state, for getting into the all-state choir. That was actually last week in Rochester. So, just for a fun fact, 2,000 students auditioned for this and they were two out of 240 selected throughout the state. So, the event was in Rochester, they did fantastic and they really made us proud in Rochester. And just one last note, as we talked about before, the RFPs went out for our committee work as we start to plan for the future of Chatham. So, we're looking for a consultant to help us navigate some of this work as we look at all of our buildings and our, and what we have to offer our kids and our enrollment. So, we're looking for a consultant on that. So, if anyone's out there listening, RFPs are due back in mid-January. I've received one so far. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, special education updates, Stephanie?
Good evening. So, I wanted to just give a brief overview of where we are with our special education program. So, the special education system is run by a multitude of federal, state and local laws. One of the pieces that Chatham is assigned to complete this year is called SPP8, which is a performance indicator. So, every year, we're timing the surveys with our annual review meetings when we have our families here and having those discussions with us. So, immediately following or prior, have the opportunity to complete these confidential surveys. We don't see the responses, they fill out the surveys, they go into the provided envelopes, which then get sent to POTS DAM and they put all that information together. We have to have a certain percentage of all of our families respond. So, that's why we were targeting our annual review time where we have our families in our buildings and having those discussions with them. So, it'll provide us with some really good feedback on how families feel about our process, our system and give us, you know, some really great points that we can then improve our system upon. It'll probably be beginning of next school year when we find out the results of that. They keep the survey open until the beginning of August. So, it'll, we'll find out for the next school year. If you can give me a little. So, looking at the students with disabilities in our district, you can see we have had an upward trend. I pulled the data from 2021. What is really interesting though is when I made these slides maybe a week and a half ago, this has changed already for this year. You know, in that time, I think we've had five or six students move into our district with IEPs. So, this is a very fluid number. We have students moving in and, and often we have students moving out. So, this is a very fluid number. Currently, we have greater than 20% student identified as a student with a disability, which is high, but it's currently, it's consistent with what the state averages at this point. I see following COVID, the state percentages have increased. So, this is an area that really jumps out to me and an area that we're going to take a deep dive and look at.
And it's, it's really interesting, we were having this conversation today. As we get new students in, as they register mid-year, majority of them have an IEP, which is a trend we're seeing in all the school districts throughout the region that a lot of new kids coming in need services. So, it's just increasing our numbers and how that works when a child has an IEP, they have an IEP in Chatham and we have 30 days, right? 30 days to have our own CSE meeting and make. and we have thirty days, right? Thirty days to have our own CSE meeting and make our own IEP. So we don't really have a lot of control when somebody is identified, before they come to Chatham, they will be identified when they are in Chatham then.
That, that is true. So within the first thirty days of the students starting, we get them right into an appropriate classroom and we approximate the services the best we can to match with their recommended services where at their old district to what we offer at Chatham. So we provide, you know, that close approximation. When it comes time for annual reviews, that's when we will review it again. But as Mr. Court said, when students come to us with an IEP, it's our obligation to provide those services right away and to hold a meeting within thirty days of their arrival.
Can I ask you, I'm just wondering, before two thousand and twenty-one, were those numbers fairly stable? Was it like one seven, did you, are you able to like look back before that year?
I probably could and I can, if you like. I have not looked, again, I've been here since May. So my, I, I, I had to reach into old presentations and old data to get the old ones, but I can go prior, if you want to see.
I, I don't know. I'm curious. I think, you know, the story of COVID and.
Yeah, maybe go a couple of years before COVID, like twenty, if you can get to like twenty eighteen. I don't know the answer to that question either, because I wasn't there either to be able to say.
It has been growing for a long time. A lot of other healths, I think, is where we've been seeing some of the growth.
Yeah, you'll see that in the presentation.
But even before, even before COVID, a lot of increase in other healths. Do you want to help with the classification criteria?
If I go to the next slide, I think it'll explain.
But, but we were actually identified by the state at one point because our, our rates were a little high. I'm not sure how we are now versus then, but.
We're not.
Yeah.
Right? You just got our numbers.
So we're not identified, but we are at risk to being identified. So that's why we need to really look at our processes to make sure, yeah.
That was, that was pre-COVID, I believe.
Yeah, so we're at risk again, but we're not identified, which is good. So we still have time. They wanna, we just have to provide more information for them.
So I wanted to take a look at our students and, and what we're seeing as far as the disability classifications. So when a student is identified as a student with a disability, they, they fall under thirteen different possible categories that are descriptive of the difficulty that they have within the academic setting. And so what I did was I went back and I looked at the classifications of our students from two thousand and twenty-one until now. And you see some really interesting trends. So if you look at learning disability, that's, that's the top disability classification that we see within our district. That has been decreasing. And there was that little blip that went up from twenty-three to twenty-four, but it is a decline from a few years ago. Now, what I am expecting to see as we move on with the very strong MTSS program that is happening within our buildings and really intervening in the classroom, at the classroom level in elementary school, we will see, I'm predicting, a continued drop in the identification of a learning disability in students. Other health impaired is our second most common disability classification, and you can see that has been on the rise. That includes children who have diagnoses of attention deficit, anxiety, some of those mental health pieces. And as we know, just from, you know, in our culture, there has been a rise in mental health with our students and we're seeing that reflected in our district as well. Yeah, yes. That also include, yes, some health impairments, like a student who, you know, may be a diabetic and they need certain accommodations that would fall under that as well.
Yeah, it's, it's a little frustrating, actually, that the, these are, these are federal classifications.
Yeah.
And they do not distinguish mental health impairment from any, anything physical, which it'd be really nice to break that down.
Yeah. And the, the other one I wanted to highlight was speech and language. We see a rise in that. That is what is a manifestation of we are intervening early with our littles, with our students in pre-K, with our students in kindergarten. We are get, our therapists are going in and identifying and working with these students early. So then they are declassified before third or fourth grade. So, so that, that is a, a nice indication of, you know, the work in identifying students and providing that support early is what we're seeing.
Stephanie, do we have a speech improvement program here as well as the classification program?
We do. We have our, our students that our therapists may screen and the level of difference doesn't rise to, you know, this looks like a disability that would impact their academics, but maybe, you know, they have difficulty with an R or an L, some certain sounds. They do offer speech improvement where it's through general education, they'll work with them on a systematic basis to work on those skills. So we are doing some of that as well.
Does the county pick up any of the cost of the pre-K or is it all out? The county does pick that up.
Yeah, which is nice. Our, our therapists, we are very, very fortunate to have our speech therapists provide pre-K services. Every time I go to a county meeting, they always use Chatham as an exemplar because we are always on time with our identification and providing testing and services for our students. Many, many, many of our districts in Columbia County and Rensselaer County, there's no providers. There's no one to do the evaluations. So because we have the staff and we're doing our own, we get reimbursed through Medicaid. Our therapists are all credentialed and that's filed and we receive reimbursement through Medicaid.
So, so just to explain to some board members in case, pre-K, I mentioned this last year, to those of you that were on the board last year, so many different rules and laws with pre-K compared to K to twelve. So anytime a child is classified with the disability before they come to kindergarten, the county pays for any of the disability services. So as long as a child has an IEP saying that they need speech, the county will, will pay for that. But what Chatham did, you know, well before I came, they did a contract with the county to be a provider. So our speech and language teachers are per county, also not only Chatham teachers, but they're county providers, so they can give the services and we can get reimbursed. Same with their school psychologists. Most districts don't do that. They don't contract with the county, so they cannot use their internal people. But that's why we are meeting all the mandates, because we're using our own people. And the reason I believe the district did it several years ago was because they're our kids. Let's give them what they need early on for early intervention. And, because what's happening in other districts, they're not getting speech, they're not getting their evaluation done when they're younger, because they have no one to do that.
And it's significant delay. I mean, I was listening to some districts talk, like they are six months behind. And in the life of a three-year-old, that's a long time. So we are able to, to meet those needs of our students in our district, which is nice.
We had a period of time where we were just struggling to get the providers out of the county. That's why we did that. Yeah, and I, I'm, we were, we were, it was a little bit of a jumping off a cliff thing, because we weren't sure if these, we weren't really sure what the increase in services was gonna look like, were we even gonna be able to pay for any of disposition? But it seems like we've been.
So some of our speech, some of our speech teachers and school psychologists salaries are reimbursed from the county, right? So yeah, we might have a little bit, but we are getting reimbursed then.
Yeah.
Any questions on this slide?
And that's, there's a contract for that, you know, how much it is, and that's something we have to do yearly with the county.
You're fine. So just looking, I wanted to give a breakdown of the continuum of services. So when a student receives support through the Committee on Special Education, there's a continuum of services from starting at the top, like the least restrictive, all the way down to the bottom, which would be the most restrictive service. So you can see, looking at district-wide consultant teacher services, that's special ed teacher going into the classroom with the, with the students and working with them and the teacher during a certain class period. We have sixty-one students this school year receiving that service, and that's at the middle school and the high school. At MED, they do a different type of service there. At Resource Group is the next one. We have a hundred and seventeen students who receive that support and that's across all three buildings. So that's a time where students would have a period where they meet with their special education teacher and do goal work and, and prepare for the week. We have our related service providers. We have counseling, speech, OT, music therapy. Music therapy is in some of our out-placed facilities where we have students who are attending Questar programs or some of our private and physical therapy. We offer integrated co-teaching support and that's at MED. That's where the teacher is with the, the special ed teacher and the general education teacher work together to, to provide the instruction and support the students with their academics. Then we have some special classes within our district. So as you can see, as we go down, we're moving away from the general classroom. So it's getting more restrictive. So we have a language concepts class in the elementary school, which is full. And we have students in that class that are non-verbal and using devices to communicate and students who are really struggling with expressive and receptive language. So we have a class that provides that support. It's a six-student maximum, one teacher and two adults in that class. We also have an eight-one-two classroom at the elementary school, which is our older students. It's grades two through four. And that's more academic in nature for our students who still need continued support and a smaller environment than the general education classroom. And at the high school, we have a classroom, a life skills classroom. This class goes out every single day for an hour and a half and they do work within the community. The students are working on their goals such as communicating, interacting with different members of the community. They're working on money and organization and just those real authentic life skills that will take them beyond their time at Chatham. We have thirteen students who are in schools outside of Chatham. So these range from some Questar school programs to some private day programs. And we have a couple of students who, because of severe medical needs, they are at a residential placement as well. We have no one that receives home instruction. So home instruction would be a student who, because of their extreme medical need, has to be instructed at home by someone coming into their home. So that would be the most restrictive.
And we're, you know, those, the ones on the bottom are the most expensive placements. So we're always looking at opportunities during budget time to see, can we provide them in-house? Like, we were having a conversation today. We're seeing more and more kids that have ED classifications or maybe not even classification, but tendency, emotionally disturbance. And we typically don't have programs for them in-house. Is there a way we can provide a program in-house so we're not having to send them out? It's always least restrictive to keep kids in their homeschool. So those are conversations we'll continue to be having. Those are hard, though, to provide, because they need a lot of therapeutic interventions. But it's a conversation we're always having and it really depends on your cohort of kids. What are their ages? What are their needs? So is there a group we can do within and have a class in our school rather than sending them out? So just, we're always talking about that.
We talked about it today.
We did.
And, and just a piece that's tricky is the state has legislation, they call it FAP twenty-two, so it's Free and Appropriate Public Education for Students through their twenty-first year up until their twenty-second birthday. So this has always been a controversy, you know, we know students are eligible for education until the age of twenty-one. Now, the, the, the language says through the school year that they turn twenty-one. The issue that has come up in many meetings that I'm at is that there's no funding or there's, you know, from the state on this. So many of our students who may be in one of those placements that are outside of our building, that's another year of providing service. And currently, at this point, the, the reimbursement, it's, it's unfunded at this point.
And just for new board members, for those in-state, out-of-state, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars per kid that the district has to pay. That's how much an outside placement is costing now. So when I say expensive, it's, it's a big part of our budget. It's one point three million dollars approximately.
And as I said, the Committee on Special Education is also responsible for programming for our preschool students. So our students from the ages of three to when they come to kindergarten, so it's three to five, they receive services through the county. The county pays for it, but we act as their CSE. So we currently have eighteen students. Again, this is very fluid. I saw on my screen today, we have some other evaluations in the hopper. So this changes all the time, but as of this date, we had eighteen. So you could see many of our students maybe just receiving, be receiving additional support like speech or OT or PT. And we know best practice is to intervene early. So this is nice to see. We do have some students that attend like a preschool and receive services in that. That would be, you know, maybe services within our, our school, in MED, they can get support. We also have students that are in area preschools and may have special ed teachers contracted in. And we also have students that go to preschool programs that have classes that are integrated or a special class that's designated just for students with disabilities. So this is paid for by the county if the students, and we, and we get reimbursed. County also handles transportation and all of that as well. One other piece I wanted to talk about was the Orton-Gillingham curriculum. This is a reading initiative that has been really taken flight at the elementary school and has grown and grown as it has been. People have been trained and it's been implemented with fidelity. So I gave a little overview here of when it was piloted and then they had a few people trained. So currently, we have seven of our special education teachers are trained and working with sixty-six students between the two buildings are receiving a specialized reading program. My goal is to look, now that we will have, at the end of this year, we'll have another year of data on this program. I want to see how effective it has been. I want to look at the performance of these students. The Orton-Gillingham program is very, it's multisensory, it's very hands-on. I was observing a class today and the students were standing up, they were tapping out sounds, they were writing on screens, they were spelling-playing rock, paper, scissors. It's a whole-body approach to phonemic awareness. So we have a lot of interest in it. The teachers are anecdotally sharing that they've had a lot of great results. So once we have this, another year of a data point, I want to really look at that and share to see how it is. We're hoping to expand the number of teachers trained. We're having some discussions about training some additional teachers in this program. I just wanted to touch upon how MTSS and the special education system really work together in tandem. The goal of MTS is to provide that high-quality instruction within the classroom and provide that differentiation in the classroom before a referral to special education is made if a student's having difficulty. So my thought is that, you know, we will look and then we're watching our initial identification rate. We should see a drop in that because more is going to happen within the classroom at that tier-one level before the referral to special education happens on that MTSS graphic. And finally, I just wanted, all this data, looking at our future needs, you know, what are some of the strategic priorities that as the, you know, Student Support Service Department, what should we really focus on? And one of the top things that is going to be examined is that systematic review program. Looking at all the services that we provide, the programs, the location of the programs, where are our students and what do they need? Really looking at that and looking at the entrance and exit criteria for the programs. Add a comprehensive service needs assessment. So really looking at our enrollment trends, looking at the needs of our students and making sure that we're programming appropriately. And building that capacity within our district. Like Mr. Court said, looking at how can we provide the supports for our students so we don't have to send them to a different location to receive high-quality instruction? How can we design our programs to provide that here? And through MTSS, reducing our initial identification rates of our students with disabilities. So these are all key pieces on the radar that we're looking at as we proceed through the school year. Any questions?
Do we have any information on any, the number of students who are transitioned from special education? I would think it's going to be very small. So that's why the identification of students, their needs, the MTSS and the rest is so important early on. Because they tend to stay with us. But I know you have a ten percent, a goal of a ten percent increase in students meeting their goals on their IEPs. So it'll be interesting to see what happens toward the end of the year. I'm not, I think students should get exactly what they need. It's not that I'm advocating for transitioning a lot of students from special education, but it is a process that, for some students, does work.
And that's a conversation that we have very often, talking with the teachers on, you know, really looking at what are the accommodations our students are using? Are they still necessary? Because, you know, often, you know, students, they're doing well. And so, you know, it's like, oh, the parents may not want to rock the boat. They're doing well, and that's totally understandable. But also knowing that our goal in special education is to provide that support and give them the skills so then we can take that away. Yeah.
Uh, one question, one comment? I'll give you the comment first because it's easy. I'm looking at the second bullet here, the service needs assessment. I know that it's really hard to predict this stuff because we have such a small district, it's all lumpy data. But at the point in the year where you're looking at the next year and you have some data, I'd love to see some, something here in this, in this room. The question, for our high-tier twos and tier threes that maybe don't, have not been identified, or at least not within an IEP, do we have funding risk there? If we are successful in diverting away from the CSE process, you know, because we're succeeding with the earlier intervention, it might end up being the same intervention but without the identification, without the funding. So what, what should we anticipate there as we're moving forward here and implementing early, earlier interventions? Yeah, I mean, they, they come in and they increase funding on the basis of identification, right? So if we're, if we're pushing, if we're pushing this, like the tier threes particularly, right, earlier, hopefully to divert them away from identification, that's basically coming out of our pocket, right?
Mike, do you know what the, the rate is? Because we don't, do, do you know how to see? So not everything gets, gets state-funded. So just because a child is identified doesn't mean you get like a percentage back. It's really dependent on the service, and it's usually the more...
The non-divertible.
Yeah, usually the higher-needs students. So do you know what the?
Yeah, so.
I think you're talking about stack more than anything, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, so if we, so really, we don't get, so anything that we do in-house, special education, special education zones that we stack or, you know, we have to get to over like, you know, it's like, we get a hundred thousand dollars, we get twenty-five thousand back. If we send to BOCs because it's a public program, same thing, we get a small percentage. So we really don't get a lot of money. We spend a lot, we don't get much. Now, when we send people out of district to private placements, that's where we do get a much more significant rate, but those students can cost two hundred thousand dollars. So maybe you get seventy percent back now, or sixty-five. It's still a significant amount of money. So the more we can, you know, meet the students' needs and get them into the general population, if we can do that, then it is much more beneficial financially for the district. You know, and some of the students, obviously, we can't, but there would be a savings.
So the, the early intervention is not really, it's not the same pool of expense as the, the high-needs identifications.
It has to be over a certain threshold to get reimbursed. Very few of them.
Does anyone else have any other questions, comments? Thank you, Stephanie. Very informative.
There are schools that don't do that. So that's one obvious boon, I think, for our science instruction in fifth grade. There's a focus on hands-on and engaging activities. You know, I popped in the classroom just a couple of days ago, and it was very engaging and hands-on, and, and kids respond well to that. So another piece there. Curriculum activities and assessments are all clearly tied to the, the new state science standards. A lot of work has gone into making sure of that. Emphasis on student choice. So CER, claim, evidence, reasoning is a, is an instructional piece, right? And the students do a research project and they get to pick their topic. And that little piece, though, you think about the buy-in from a student, is pretty obvious there, right, that they can research what they want to, making it more engaging. Collaboration among all the content areas. So common academic vocabulary, hearing the same language, even just that word "claim," making a claim. What does a claim mean? And you might hear that in science and in English and in math and in social studies. So you start, it's just better practice, right, for the students to really grasp that, the meaning of those words. You know, shared with me that at the end of fourth grade, when they hear that we're going to do science every day and what they're going to do, this past year, the kids cheered. They were excited and couldn't wait to jump into science the following fall. So that's a good thing, get them, get them excited. And just one little other piece, we look at a spring of twenty-twenty-seven. That group in eighth grade will be the first cohort as well. Shared notes are available immediately, even during the lesson. So students are, because a lot of times, right, notes you would look at after the lesson, you're taking the notes during it. These are shared at the beginning of the lesson. So they're there. Teacher even shared that, you know, a student was working, looking on a Chromebook, but said, oh, no, I'm, I'm following what you're saying. So kind of, I don't know, sometimes that's a higher education skill, right? But we're doing that in the chemistry classroom. So really good practice there. And the, the, really, there's been a focus on empowering students to use those slide decks and use those notes and use other resources at their pace, a little more personal instruction. And I think when students, you know, I, again, I don't know what research I could get to prove this, but when students feel a little more in charge or guiding their own instruction, they're, they're going to probably perform better. So that was another focus. Every unit last year had an academic vocabulary piece embedded into it, which, again, will, will build and kind of spiral through the whole year. So I won't try to make up chemistry terms for you or elements, but using those again and again in, in that language piece growing has been helpful. And then, you know, again, a focus on looking at whatever current lesson or unit the, the students are working on, and then going back to overall cohesion with the standards. How does this relate to what we did before? How does this relate to what we'll do after? So seeing, you know, kind of sequential learning, felt like, they felt like that was a big growth with the students. So lastly, I just shared, you know, after I had these conversations and dug in a little, you know, crosswalking the two. So what came out of both of them? Academic vocabulary and the academic language use jumped out. Engaging activities, things where the students were excited about what they were doing hands-on. And student personalization. So a student having some ownership, really, of what's, what was happening. So, you know, again, we, we had a seventy-five percent proficiency rate on that, on that grade five. We were number one in the area, that it was awesome. And the chemistry region's a ninety percent proficiency rate, which, which is a forty percent improvement in one year. So clearly, I hate to use the words like outliers or something because we hope this is going to be consistent, but two really great pieces where we were successful. And that's really what I, what I could find here since last we met. So questions or thoughts?
I know that you, you mentioned that the, I guess, the, the jargon or the vocabulary was in, was a focus on both of those classes, but they're really different age ranges, different, and, and really different methods of why there was such great performance. I think it, it sounds like it was an awful lot of lesson planning and curriculum design in the, in the chemistry specifically. And it must have been an awful lot of work. And I'm curious, to, to what extent can we create incentives around that across other, other classes? Because that, it, it was truly above and beyond there. So I, I don't know, I guess that's an open-ended observation slash question.
Well, and I think too, the more we can share those successes, and that's why I appreciate the question too, was, was the how? How, how did this happen? The more we can just share that and, and, you know, sometimes the, the content areas, the more you can collaborate across them, helps make that grow, right? But yeah, I would agree with you. It'd be, it, clearly, a lot of work went into this. And I think maybe another, you're making me think that when you ask that question is, both, both of these things, there's change, and change is hard, right? And I think these are examples of where change, folks are open to it, and it paid off. So I think that would be another piece I should have shared with the crosswalk that I'm really just kind of reflecting on now, but, because that is hard. And we, when everything is backed by evidence and data, sometimes it's scary to change things. But when you, when you feel comfortable to take that risk and the more we can provide that to our teachers to feel comfortable to, to do that, then I think the better our results will continue to be.
And with the new classroom in chemistry, hopefully, will add an element to that. I just want to note that cohort for the fifth-grade science, they are the ones with the ninety-six point two attendance rate, too.
Yeah, yeah. Very true.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'm just kind of wondering, thought, do you think it's replicable in other subjects and other grades? Do you have any thoughts in that regard? I mean, besides like getting everybody to school would be huge, right? That would be, we can make that replicable. That would be a big boost. But did you, I mean, it's a big question, but were there any thoughts of, okay, fourth-grade teachers, look what the fifth-grade teachers did. We can do this. Or let's have a conversation about what they did and see what we can implement here to replicate that success.
Though, so those discussions are happening. And I, and I think, Andrew, to your question is, the, the engagement piece is big, but I think also that our teachers are very willing to collaborate. I mean, you heard the, the senior team, how well they collaborate. There's, I give you a lot of examples of that. But the more that we work together, because there's a lot of smart people who work in this district, and I think when we put all those brains together, that's where I think the magic can really happen. And, and they both kind of talked a little bit about that too. Academic vocabulary, to me, too, is, is using it. You know what I mean? I know that sounds simple, but the days of just, you know, studying words and looking at them, it's, it's pretty low-level learning, right? Like just repeating something, but when you use it and grow and multiple people are using the same language, you just see, you know, like, think of our capstone skills and things. When people start using that more, whatever that may be. So, you know, the claim, evidence, reasoning piece is one example. It just makes learning better. And I think that's, to your question, is, would probably be my biggest takeaway, is that can be replicated, I think, at any grade level and across any content area. That, that piece of that.
All right. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, operational update and financial reserve plan review, Mike.
All right. So before I do the financial reserve plan, just a couple of items on the capital project. So over the Thanksgiving break, we did have some work done. So we had the Tarazo flooring. We had, for some of the doors that were moved in this wing, they finished that flooring, that looks great, because there was, there was pieces of that for each of those doors. And then we also got our metal cabinets in the tech room. So they originally, by accident, set wood cabinets that we're going to be able to keep for somewhere else. They could decide where to place those, but they did put the metal ones in, those look great. And then we had some small, you know, adjustments on some of the cabinets and small work done there. So in Christmas break or the holiday break, we're going to do the, that's where the front entrance, you know, the benches, the stone work. That's going to be a big, big push for that work there. Cabinet installations, we are getting some other cabinets to finalize our cabinet that we need to install. And then the tech room, the epoxy on the floor in the tech room, that's some of the other big items. So we're still moving along, we're still pushing them, you know, keep, keep moving forward because we still got another big year, big summer coming up, and, you know, we want to close this project out, so. And then there's a couple of items on tonight for the change orders. So I just want to briefly explain what those are. So with CKM, the electrical, since, you know, when you go over the threat, we had thresholds established and, you know, we've done quite a bit of work with them. We bring them to the board now. So we did have a sixty-seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight-dollar change order that was actually for the temporary lights. That was last November, you know, we did the lighting project out front. They had to put temporary lights because we didn't have any lights at that time. And so what happened with some of these, we, we go back and forth on pricing and how much we're going to pay, and we kind of negotiate some of that in the end. But that one's put up for tonight. And then the other ones we had in the foyer, eighty-five-hundred, eight-thousand-five-eighty was the, there's a pull box for the electrical that was going to be under the wood in the front, and that wood's permanent, you know, we can't remove it. So they had to move that to the side, under the drop ceilings. And then the last one, we went with the chemistry teacher, the, there's those cord reels that you pull down. They were in the back, we already had outlets, it really didn't make a lot of sense. You wanted to push those to the front, so we did meet and discuss, and then went over, and it was, made much more sense for the students to utilize those. So we did have those pushed forward. I will mention on CKM, because we've had, that's, that's really where we have a lot of our change orders and significant amount. But remember, they did the lighting project, our lights went, we had to do something. It was going to cost us a lot of money, so we, we were able, we decided, let's do the front lights. They're up, they're wonderful, you know, and we added more lights. So that actually went out, worked out real well. They did do the site work, so there's change order money for the site work that was done for the generator. That was going to go in the site bid, but, you know, we're on this tight schedule. So that first year, we asked them, and we got quotes and bids and, or quotes on that work, and it fit within what we were expecting. So that was, that was already in the site budget, so we just moved that over there. And then the last bigger piece was the pull stations for the fire alarms. You know, we were going to do the new portion of the building, but it didn't make sense. You know, we had an antiquated system for, you know, a lot of the other portion of the building. So we, we made that for a safety issue and health and safety and something we should upgrade our system, so we did those. So those are the change orders. Um, and that's the capital project. And then now we can talk about the reserve plan. So I look back, I think this is the eleventh year that we've done this uh, that we officially present this to the board and go through the finance committee on this. Um, and I want to thank the committee for meeting, you know, this is our kickoff of really the budget season. Uh, because and then January, February, March, we really, you know, we don't look over one year, a one year budget cycle. We tried to look over ten years to see where we're going. So if you can uh, go to the next page, let's just see. Okay, the ne- next one. Uh, so this is kind of the philosophy, ten year uh, outlook. And what we really want to do is we want to have, you know, we want to improve our educational program. We want stability. We want, we don't want a volatile tax levy, you know, rates going up and down. We try to keep a stabilized levy, which we've been a little over two percent over that my my, you know, my fourteen years here. Um, and we, so we can maintain programming during downturns. And then cash flow for investment earnings, um, we've been very fortunate with that the last few years. Uh, and you know, one of the big other things on, I think on the next page is the the rating. You know, we like to have a higher credit rating that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars um, when we issued, we've issued debt. Go to the next uh, next one. Next one, let's go to the summary. So this kind of summarizes um, last last uh, school year. So if you look at the bottom line, total fund balance, this is all our reserves and in in different categories, we went up two point one million dollars. So it was another good year financially. Um, and if you look on the in- increased side of the table, on that side, you can see we put a million in capital reserve. So we have authorization for nine point five million. We're, we put a million there, so we have three million for a future project. Uh, but another one that we really increased was the E R S reserve, one million dollars and then the T R S ninety-eight thousand. So we kind of maxed out our reserves where we had our targets. Oh, and we have more money in the E R S and I'm going to discuss that slide. We we met as a committee and had a recommendation going into the next, this budget season. But really, um, you know, when I discussed with the finance co- committee, we have these reserves and when I show the charts at the end, kind of where we are, you know, and our kind of our timelines and different scenarios, the flexible reserves are pretty much all the reserves except for the capital, like that has to be on a project. So it'd be easy to say, okay, let's put more for a future in the capital reserve. But once it's in there, then it really can't be used to balance our operation. So if we have a project coming up and we feel strong where we are, then we can move some money for that. So but keeping the flexibility, having these other reserves will protect us in downturns. So you can see the total fund balance did go up, but I would, a couple cautions I did say is interest income. I negotiate with the bank, uh, was it a year ago? We got our rates much higher um, with when rates came down with the Fed, they did drop slightly, but they, our banks holding, you know, I'm very pleased with our bank and what we're getting compared to others, other districts. Uh, so that income is a significant piece. That's a million dollars of that two million dollar uh, bottom line. And the other thing is we've had health uh, and prescription rebates that I allocated over a a four year period. So we could, you know, uh, help our budget. Um, and those are kind of tailing out because health insurance, we're not getting those refunds in prescription. We're actually, we're getting, you know, the same thing. Those are kind of leveling out, so we're not getting those. So that's a significant revenue source that is starting to to go down. Um, but like I said, it was a very good year for us financially. Now, if we go to the, let's go to, keep going, go through one of the slides. Um, keep going, another one. Okay, so let's do workers' comp. So all of the reserves that were listed above, we went through these slides, but that they then have a page that gives the how they're established, when they're established and what they're used for, if you can go to the next one. So this is workers' comp. So we have reserve targets we put in place, uh, you know, ten years ago. We kind of look at these each year, so this is five to ten percent of payroll. And this is can be used to pay our premiums. So we do use this in our budget. We budget zero for workers' comp and we at the beginning there, we increase our budget to utilize this reserve. Right now, we're at our limit, ten percent, kind of our target limit we wanted. Um, the main thing with this is, and I discussed that is, you know, one workers' comp case that's significant. Uh, Bosie's had one a few years ago. It it increased their their premiums went up significantly. So we have some protection and this is one of the reserves we can use. And if we go back to, let's go to the um, do me a favor and go to, keep going. Let's see. Let's go to the uh, E R S reserve, so keep going on that. I don't know if you can see that on there. This is the reserve that we discussed and we want to bring down. All right, so this is the one, so this is a very usable reserve because uh, we paid out five hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine thirty uh, for last school year in E R S. This is the non-instructional uh, employees' costs that we pay to the state for retirement. And you can see the, you know, the variability of the rates, fifteen percent in seventeen eighteen, twenty-five, twenty-six was sixteen percent. So that these are significant costs for our 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 um, district. But the nice thing about this reserve is we can lower our our budget of this number. Um, and we can utilize this reserve to help when we need to balance budgets. So we discussed this reserve, you go to the next one, let's see if I can see that on there. All right, so and I added a little bit of different um, wording on this one. And then we met with, you know, our uh, our committee and our community member, Dave Lugo was there. He's been longstanding community member, uh, you know, worked on Wall Street. I think he's been fif- fourteen years with me or fifteen years here. So we discussed this and and made some recommendations and the committee agreed. Pension costs are significant costs, um, but we decided that we've been putting away money in this reserve and we kind of had a five year target on this. And we're at about nine and a half years of E R S projected cost. Last couple of years, we've been putting more money into this because we weren't sure what the state's going to do with our whole harmless. And we are facing more economic uncertainty. So we decided to do those, we want to use some of this for this next school budget, so twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So for example, we we budgeted six hundred and sixty-one thousand for this school year's budget. We're going to eliminate the budget line for E R S and put zero. And we're actually going to use this money because we want to get kind of trend back down to that five year average and we're at nine and a half. So projected twenty twenty, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty-seven balance, if we do that, you know, depending on where costs go for next budget, but you know, we brought that six point oh seven nine million or nine point two years. So we want to trend this down, kind of that five year target, because we have built up reserves and want to get back some back to the taxpayer. And we are starting like last year, having to use some of our reserves to balance our budget. I think this is, this makes sense, but we also have the caveat that we'll review this each year like we always do to see where we are and to see, you know, if we have to make any adjustments um, in what we're doing. And the last thing I said is we always had money in this reserve, so you know, we're finishing up this project. But if we were on another project and said, oh, we want to put some more in the capital reserve to offset the taxpayers' costs, we could move money out of here to do that also. So that was really the big thing, item that we discussed and we're going to start, because we are starting to use some of our money. Uh, but like workers' comp, we budget zero, we're going to budget zero for this one too. So that'll help for next year's budget. If we go to the last uh, slide, the graph. Okay, so here's our graph, updated graph. I show this every year. It's not really, for somebody who's not showing up on the, on there, but it will show up on the website. So best case, base case and worst case, so red is the worst case kind of scenario. We looked at base case, yellow, and then green's the best case. So what we look at, and I have a lot of the day I discussed, we have, you know, our average increases over the last twelve years uh, in taxes, our state budget increases over, you know, we look over time at all our expenses, our costs and have a budget model with all the, every single line um, that we budget. And then we spread, we run those scenarios out over those years. So green case is kind of like everything works our way, you know, I'm not anticipating that much. But I'm kind of in that yellow ro- line that we're kind of looking at. So this year, you know, we're at fifteen million. Uh, so this school budget, this year, I'm actually anticipating us to be, you know, a little in the gre- little positive, you know, and if you look at the yellow, we're going to put some money away if interest income stays up. It stayed up six months. I know the Fed cut rates, they want to cut more. If that does get cut more, it'll hurt, but we built our first six months where we have a lot of our cash from the tax receipt. So I feel confident we'll have a good year. It's the out years, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, eight. I think we're going to start finally turning that corner. We got to watch where we start using reserves and, you know, we start actually using reserves. So that's what we're going to have to watch over the next few years. And as we do that, you know, you get into twenty-seven, eight, if it does kind of follow that pattern, then we got to make decisions. That's when you look at taxes, you look at staffing, you look at everything, because we obviously can't. We can't go down that cliff, because when you go down the cliff, then you have massive increases. So it's going to be looking at everything, but we've done this, you know, it's my fifteenth year doing this. So we've been able to manage this. And one of the positives, since we've had surpluses, is we've given, I think it's uh, what is it, fourteen or fifteen million back in capital reserve when we did capital projects. So we did give that back, so we didn't have to increase taxes for the taxpayer on that. So that's where we are. Um, like I said, it was a positive year and but we are, it's getting tighter and it's getting more challenging. And I like the suggestion, I was thinking, we, you know, it's time to use some of the reserves to balance our budget going forward. So any questions on that?
You mentioned um, you've presented this for ten years. Was there not a reserve plan before that?
No, so when I came on board, that was one of the, one of the drivers was to create a long term plan. So I created an Excel model kind of with these graphs. And and the reason we adopt it now is when, and I I did that when I started here, so I've been here what, fourteen or fifteen years? And then after a few years, the state audit came in and they said, oh, it's great, you have all these plans and you talk about it in front of the board, but you don't officially adopt it. So when, that was one of the recommendations in the state audit. So we said, okay, we'll meet with the committee. And we 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 enhanced my plan, we added reserve targets and then we adopted every year. So we kind of admit that and I think that's good, we kind of officially adopt what we're looking at. But schools, you know, this is my twentieth year, right? So when I started, it was a lot of budget to budget, one year to one year, which is extremely difficult to do. So I've been doing these for a long time, but definitely it's beneficial.
Mike, you got to refresh my memory. Like, so if twenty-five, twenty-six, the red, the worst case scenario, what happens?
So and and that's for, so that's this school year, right? So we're, we're, we're pretty solid because interest rates have held up. And we're not going to just lose money in one year where we're standing. So that would have been if um, that was more of a scenario, it would have been a slight, so you see fifteen million for twenty-four, twenty-five, the green? So that would be just under, you know, we wouldn't have used a lot of reserves, but if interest rates really went down to nothing um, or we had something happen, you know, in the district where we had a lot more costs, then you can see that's a slight usage, right? Now, in the red case, you can see in twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, that year, we're kind of running out of money at that year. So what that means, if we did nothing and just sat there and planned and at the next school year, you, you know, to cop, that deficit would be three million dollars. We'd have to raise taxes twelve, fifteen percent. We don't want to do those things. So that's why we look at these and then we plan, we got to take that yellow line or if that's the base cases, that's what I've done since I've been here and we got to spread that out, you know, for, keep going, right? Year after year after year. And that's where you look at staffing, you look at ta- you have to look at taxes, you look at that whole picture.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so this is um, a document that any community member can access. Um, it's going to be on our website.
Goes on our website every year.
Education, um, you know, the board docs, this is available for everyone to look at. I just wanted to let everybody know that they really wanted to drill down and read everything about it. It's, it is there for a, for review. Thank you, Mike, I appreciate it. So board committee reports, we put finance committee on here because we did meet and uh, what he said. Okay, and now we're on to the wellness committee.
Sure, so just real quick, so we didn't meet as a whole group, but I know we've been meeting in our small groups. So my small group is student wellness. So we decided that on March twelfth, um, from five thirty to seven thirty, we're going to be, we're going to be doing a Chatham Community Wellness Fair. Um, and we are going to be looking at the eight different pieces of wellness, social, emotional, physical, environmental, occupational, financial, intellectual and spiritual, and bringing community members in um, to really help support and do some um, different presentations, booths, activities on each of those different areas for our community. So we're going to invite all of our students, all of our students' parents, and we'll be doing an educational session after school. So we already have a ton of ideas, we already have a whole bunch of vendor lists, we're reaching out to uh, businesses, health insurance, you know, you name it. Um, asking them to come to this fair um, and inviting our whole community. So that is what we started to plan. Um, we kind of divided and conquered and we're calling a lot of people and trying to get people booked for that event. So that's what we did.
So you went past, do we have a date for that yet?
March twelfth, five thirty to seven thirty. It's called the Chatham Community Wellness Fair. We're going to try to get a little, we have a couple other idea names going out there, but we're going to make it really exciting and invite the whole community.
And tonight, our student representative could not be here, but um, she gave Andrew her report, so he's going to.
So she gave me a report, so I will just read what she said. So first congratulate Paxton and Aiden for being in Allstate. We already talked about that, so big congratulations. Um, there is a capstone skills meeting this Friday. There was a presentation from Conrad Visco from the Hawthorne Valley Farm scape Program to the Biology and Environmental Class about the habitat habitat change in Columbia County over the last six hundred years. They looked at skulls and pictures of what the district looked like before buildings and discussed the impact of that. Under sports, girls and boys varsity basketball won their first game last Friday. They play again today and Friday. Boys volleyball also had some great games coming up in the next couple of weeks, as well as the bowling team. Uh, for clubs, the outdoor club has been hiking, the ski club is starting. Student government is having their Krispy Kreme doughnut fundraiser and also set up a new lost and found rack that is in the lobby. The sad group got an elf to hide around the school and whoever gets all the days correct of where he had, where he has hid, they get Apple AirPods for their prize. Not sure about that. Well, must be a, I'm assuming that's a drawing. I can't imagine everyone's getting Apple AirPods, but um, the elf's name is Coco Pepper Mittens. That's very cute. Field trips, a class went to Sienna today for a tour and the pre um, A P English class and the A P Lit class is going to the Emily Dickinson's Museum this Thursday. Everyone is excited, the winter break is just in two weeks and they're excited to have their time off. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to new business. Uh, the motion to accept donation from the Chatham Area Silent Pantry, R thirty-seven. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the donation from the Chatham Area Silent Pantry in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to replenish the pantry at School Outreach Fund for the families of the Chatham Central School District. This revenue will be classified as gifts and donations and will be held in trust in the miscellaneous special revenue fund for future expenses. Can I have a motion? Second.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Do we still have a backpack program? Is that, is that what this fund is used for, that's separate?
It's different.
Okay.
So it comes from a few different places, but every building has a backpack program every week.
Great.
But the district does not put any money from the budget into that program itself, or raised or donated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? R thirty-eight, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the M O A with C C S T A dated, oh, December, it's blank. What is it dated? It just says December twenty. Okay, should say December fifth, okay, um, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? R thirty-nine, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the donation of two L K water fountain bottle filling stations from Brian Coleman at a total value of three thousand forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. These donations will be installed in the Chatham Middle School. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Anyone have any questions?
Uh, I'd like to comment that I'm very thankful for this donation. It's really great.
Yes.
I'm curious, do we not have bottle filling stations already and where are these going to end up? Do we know?
Brett, do you want to talk about that?
So we have one bottle filling station that is basically on the main floor. And it gets a long request to them on, we have regular water fountains on the main three floors. So this is a donation from a community member to at least take care of those.
Okay, so we're re- replacing some of the really, what are they like, sixties models or something?
No, these ones are newer, they're nineties, but we do a couple of sixty.
That's fantastic.
Great.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, so we're going to items for having a board meeting. I wanted to float the idea that when we do have like special presentations like this, can we like put a bullet point saying topics to be discussed at this board meeting, just to get a little more community engagement of, like, I'm thinking that enrollment study would have gotten a lot of people in here if they didn't know about it. I mean, granted, it's all posted, but I I was thinking maybe highlighting it somehow in some way, you know, format. What do you think about that?
I I love the idea of picking one or two items, maybe during agenda planning to say this is going on the bill, so to speak. That sounds great.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, you could put it on social media groups, Chatham, whatever, you know, put it out there. This is what's going to be discussed.
Yeah.
I don't know where else you could put it, but.
You know, Andrew had a couple of ideas about that.
Yep, Adam would put it on Facebook and any other in- internal things.
Just to keep it simple, though, we're, we're just.
Very, very.
We're doing a highlight.
And what I would ask for is that, exactly what you said, at agenda planning, the board identifies those two areas you want us to showcase.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
We're always looking for ways to get community.
So that's be part of our agenda planning and then I will give it to Adam to put up.
Great, okay. All right, guys, so that's, that's all for me. So we're going to move into our second.
So we're going to move into our second public comment.
Seven at, seven total, seven throughout, but seven was the most.
Good evening. My name is Dave O'Connor, community member. So one item on the agenda and Facebook is a lot of the seniors in the community are still just newspaper readers. So the one idea, it's a little planning, but maybe the Columbia paper comes out monthly. So if there are two meetings, and they're pretty good about putting in nice little blurbs like that. I wanted to congratulate the district on its communication successes. The senior event for the luncheon at the middle school, now up to 120 seniors. You know, this is exactly what these seniors need. They're, in many cases, more limited in their friendships and acquaintances. And this is an opportunity for them to socialize, be present, and to have an uplifting feeling about the future of their community, because God knows what they're watching on MSNBC or Fox or any of that is not uplifting at all. So again, I, I, and it's what our kids need too. They need to get better at interpersonal skills, looking in people's eyes, body language. So again, I hope that those things are highlighted during that event. I want to congratulate the district on the chronic absenteeism rate. If we take last year's findings, the best performing school in the county was Germantown at 17%. And that's where Chatham is now. So that's a great improvement over the 30 plus percent that high, the high school was at a year ago. So whatever you're doing, keep doing it. And I would argue that this is the kind of thing that the BOSIs, the Questar, needs to be aware of what Chatham